We have one agenda item, but before that, we're going to do introductions from the dais right on time, Christy.
Christy Rieschel, Assistant Clerk.
Leslie Hervey, Clerk to the Board.
Stephanie Sumroldumas, Commissioner.
Hamilton County Commissioner, Alicia Reese.
Jeff Aluto, County Administrator.
Patrick Dressing, Assistant Prosecuting Attorney.
I'm County Commissioner Denise Streithaus. All right, so we are going to hear about the Hamilton County Addiction Response Annual Report, and we're dedicating our meeting to this this morning. We've got many members from the Addiction Response Coalition with us this morning. Thank you all for sticking around. We just had a press conference to talk about the work of this coalition over the past year, but we're also recognizing that it is the 10-year anniversary of the organization, which is really something to recognize. I celebrate my -- it's hard to celebrate when we're talking about losing people's lives in Hamilton County, but the work of this group has been impactful, it's been lasting, it has saved lives, and the dedication of these individuals and their predecessors through their organizations has really been remarkable. And it's the reason that we've had some success in our community in reducing overdose deaths in Hamilton County. So, thank you all for being -- I can't say thank you enough. And Megan Guthrie and Abby Fritsch, who are the leads in the Office of Addiction Response, are going to do the presentation. We're going to hear from all the pillars and then look at some of the numbers. So Megan, I'm going to turn it over to you.
All right. Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you so much for having us this morning on a day that marks exactly 10 years since the Heroin Summit launched in the city of Norwood, and really that work that brings us together. Over the past decade, the coalition has grown from this bold idea into a transformative force in Hamilton County. So I've had the privilege of being part of this journey for almost six years, and in that time, the growth and progress that I've been able to witness and be a part of has been very special. And none of this would have been possible without some of the visionaries that got us here as part of the founding members of the coalition, early champions that we had as well as those that have joined us along the way. So, I also just wanted to take a moment as well. It's 10 years since the coalition started, but only two years that our department has been around, and so I wanted to offer that clarification because I know that can confuse people sometimes, but I'm just so grateful for my incredible team as well, including my QRT navigators, our task force, Mike and Peggy, our task force officers, Abby Fritsch, who's in it with me every day. So we've been able to build something truly unique in Hamilton County and work in an organization like no other of this scale to have an Office of Addiction Response. So, over the years, Chief Signan has shared some early emails and correspondence with me, and so I wanted to share an excerpt of that to kind of get us started today. And this was part of the group discussing how they wanted to make the announcement about the coalition and roll out the coalition work in March of 2015. So, quote, "We feel it's important that we make the announcement together. We must show that it is more than a coalition, but a collaboration. We want to show the public that we are united, action-oriented, and that there are no jurisdictional, personal, or political boundaries. We must show the public that this includes frontline police, fire, EMS, doctors, nurses, who are burned out by the overwhelming demand and feeling helplessness, that every part of the system is working together if we are here to gain their trust, confidence, and more importantly, their involvement in reporting heroin, helping get others to treatment and feel that what is now an epidemic will hopefully soon be a manageable social issue. We're on the verge of an initiative that has the potential to literally save lives. The only thing that can stop us is us. I urge you to continue the work together and our rapid progress on this issue is an example of how powerful we are when we are united in a common goal. So let's make sure to show that the families who have lost loved ones to heroin, those who are still suffering, those on the edge of addiction, send a message to those that deal heroin, and be a catalyst for change that will inspire the entire region to say we will no longer tolerate heroin in our community. We as leaders of this region must show the public that this purpose is bigger than each of us as individuals, and we must stand united as leaders." And I would say thanks to the collective efforts of the steering committee that's here today, over 1,000 stakeholders that we have in our coalition network, and the incredible providers and programs that we've worked with. We have done just that in Hamilton County. And Chris, I don't know if you can show the numbers, but Hamilton County is projected to experience a 52% decrease in our overdose deaths from our crisis peak in 2017 with an estimated 270 overdose deaths this year. So while this milestone is a significant one, we must never lose sight of what these numbers represent. Those are 270 individuals, 270 grieving families in our community, so our work is far from over. Tragically, since 2015, we have lost more than 4,450 lives have been lost to addiction in our community. But I also, I find solace in the fact that the coalition's tireless efforts have allowed us to save lives, reduce stigma, and inspire hope, and I truly believe that that number would be far greater if it weren't for this group. So really standing as a testament to the work of the steering committee, the broader coalition, and of course, the support of the Board of County Commissioners to continue to champion this work, thank you so much. And so, to give you a glimpse into our annual report and an overview of what today's events are going to look like, I'm going to turn it over to Abby.
Good morning. My name's Abby. I'm the Grants Manager for the Office of Addiction Response. And again, I just want to echo Megan's words for the support from the county and for your time and attention today, as we call to light the 10-year anniversary of the Hamilton County Addiction Response Coalition. Commissioner Reese's remarks this morning noted that we are a model for the country, and I would like to just echo that I am so proud of the work between the Addiction Response Coalition, the Quick Response Team, and having a formal Office of Addiction Response here. We are truly a model, and we would love to be able to continue to put out the good word and different practices for the rest of the country. However, it's important to note that the work is not done. The addiction crisis in Hamilton County will continue to evolve with the different changes in drug supply and other external influences. So I would just like to thank you again for the continued support, and we will continue to respond strategically as a county and a coalition. With that being said, we invite you to the 10-year anniversary panel that we will have later this afternoon at Memorial Hall. It'll start at 12:30, and this panel will really highlight the evolution of the coalition from the emergency mode that we were once in to the continuum of care and infrastructure that we're proud to have today. Following that, we'll have a brief fireside chat, a brief showing of that, which will highlight three families who have lost loved ones to the diseases of addiction and mental health, and we will highlight how they have turned their grief into action. So I'll turn over now to the pillars so that you can have the opportunity to ask questions at the end of the presentation related to the work, showing all the progress that we made this past year. So with that, I will turn it over to our first pillar speaker, Nicole Schisler.
Good morning. Thank you for having us.
Hello. My name is Nicole Schisler, and I am one of three leaders for the Prevention Pillars for HCARC. I am joined with Pat Brown, who is the Executive Director of Cincinnati Yum!Dop, and Dr. Kareem Moffett, who is the President of Cincinnati Public School Board. As a team, we focus on strengthening prevention efforts across Hamilton County. In 2024, the Prevention Pillar made significant strides in promoting safer medication disposal. Two medication lock boxes were installed at St. Vincent DePaul's Bank Street location, joining five existing boxes in Cincinnati Health Department pharmacies. Collectively, these efforts resulted in the collection and safe disposal of 980 pounds of medication. The Prevention Pillar engaged youth through a countywide youth summit co-hosted with Cincinnati Public Schools, which served 105 high school students. The Generation RX training, which was held at Corinthian Baptist Church, reached 34 youth from five African-American engagement workgroup churches across Cincinnati. Youth are empowered through information dissemination, education, and discussion. One young person stated, "We have the power to heal ourselves in conversation. Let's talk." This quote started a "Let's Talk" series, additional three series in that "Let's Talk" series for the urban community. An in-depth analysis of the 2024 student survey supported strategic efforts of Hamilton County ARC to identify high-priority schools and implement targeted prevention strategies. In 2025, the prevention goals are set to re-establish the Partner Prevention Group, increase Hamilton County Student Survey admissions to 12,000, strengthen engagement with schools, and reduce the access and availability of prescription drugs and opioids. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Lenora Godfrey, and I'm the President/CEO of the Hamilton County Mental Health and Recovery Services Board, and I sit on the Treatment Pillar with Josh Arnold, the President/CEO of Talbert House, with John Young for the African-American Engagement Work Group, as well as Danielle Jones. And John and Josh are here today. Danielle, unfortunately, could not be here with us, but she also sits on the African-American Engagement Work Group. And thank you for this opportunity just to tell you a little bit about what the Treatment Pillar has accomplished over 2024. The Treatment Pillar made significant strides in addressing substance use disorder through innovative programming and community engagement. The impact that was made, there were key success, was the African-American Engagement Work Group, AAEW, which expanded faith-based outreach and harm reduction efforts. Trimming the stigma campaign partnered with 40-plus barber shops and salons to educate communities on opioid addiction and treatment resources. Additionally,
organization like no other of this scale to have an Office of Addiction Response. So over the years, Chief Signin has shared some early emails and correspondence with me. And so I wanted to share an excerpt of that to kind of get us started today. And this was part of the group discussing how they wanted to make the announcement about the Coalition and roll out the Coalition work in March of 2015. So quote, "We feel it's important that we make the announcement together. We must show that it is more than a coalition, but a collaboration. We want to show the public that we are united, action oriented, and that there are no jurisdictional, personal, or political boundaries. We must show the public that this includes frontline police, fire, EMS, doctors, nurses, who are burned out by the overwhelming demand and feeling helplessness, that every part of the system is working together if we are here to gain their trust, confidence, and more importantly, their involvement in reporting heroin, helping get others to treatment and feel that what is now an epidemic will hopefully soon be a manageable social issue. We're on the verge of an initiative that has the potential to literally save lives. The only thing that can stop us is us. I urge you to continue the work together and our rapid progress on this issue is an example of how powerful we are when we are united in a common goal. So let's make sure to show that the families who have lost loved ones to heroin, those who are still suffering, those on the edge of addiction, send a message to those that deal heroin and be a catalyst for change that will inspire the entire region to say we will no longer tolerate heroin in our community. We as leaders of this region must show the public that this purpose is bigger than each of us as individuals, and we must stand united as leaders." And I would say thanks to the collective efforts of the Steering Committee that's here today, over 1,000 stakeholders that we have in our Coalition network, and the incredible providers and programs that we've worked with. We have done just that in Hamilton County. If you can show the numbers, but Hamilton County is projected to experience a 52% decrease in our overdose deaths from our crisis peak in 2017 with an estimated 270 overdose deaths this year. So while this milestone is a significant one, we must never lose sight of what these numbers represent. Those are 270 individuals, 270 grieving families in our community. So our work is far from over. Tragically, since 2015, we have lost more than 4,450 lives have been lost to addiction in our community. But I also, I find solace in the fact that the Coalition's tireless efforts have allowed us to save lives, reduce stigma, and inspire hope. And I truly believe that that number would be far greater if it weren't for this group. So really standing as a testament to the work of the Steering Committee, the broader Coalition, and of course, the support of the Board of County Commissioners to champion, continue to champion this work. Thank you so much. And so to give you a glimpse into our annual report and an overview of what today's events are going to look like, I'm going to turn it over to Abby.
Good morning. My name's Abby. I'm the Grants Manager for the Office of Addiction Response. And again, I just want to echo Megan's words for the support from the county and for your time and attention today as we call to light the 10-year anniversary of the Hamilton County Addiction Response Coalition. Commissioner Reese's remarks this morning noted that we are a model for the country. And I would like to just echo that I am so proud of the work between the Addiction Response Coalition, the Quick Response Team, and having a formal Office of Addiction Response here. We are truly a model, and we would love to be able to continue to put out the good word and different practices for the rest of the country. However, it's important to note that the work is not done. The addiction crisis in Hamilton County will continue to evolve with the different changes in drug supply and other external influences. So I would just like to thank you again for the continued support, and we will continue to respond strategically as a county and a coalition. With that being said, we invite you to the 10-year anniversary panel that we will have later this afternoon at Memorial Hall. It'll start at 12:30. And this panel will really highlight the evolution of the Coalition from the emergency mode that we were once in to the continuum of care and infrastructure that we're proud to have today. Following that, we'll have a brief fireside chat, a brief showing of that, which will highlight three families who have lost loved ones to the diseases of addiction and mental health, and we will highlight how they have turned their grief into action. So I'll turn over now to the pillars so that you can have the opportunity to ask questions at the end of the presentation related to the work, showing all the progress that we made this past year. So with that, I will turn it over to our first pillar speaker, Nicole Schissler.
Good morning. Thank you for having us. Hello. My name is Nicole Schissler, and I am one of three leaders for the Prevention Pillars for HCARC. I'm joined with Pat Brown, who is the Executive Director of Cincinnati YIMADOP, and Dr. Kareem Moffett, who is the President of Cincinnati Public School Board. As a team, we focus on strengthening prevention efforts across Hamilton County. In 2024, the Prevention Pillar made significant strides in promoting safer medication disposal. Two medication lock boxes were installed at St. Vincent de Paul's Bank Street location, joining five existing boxes in Cincinnati Health Department pharmacies. Collectively, these efforts resulted in the collection and safe disposal of 980 pounds of medication. The Prevention Pillar engaged youth through a countywide youth summit co-hosted with Cincinnati Public Schools, which served 105 high school students. Generation RX Training, which was held at Corinthian Baptist Church, reached 34 youth from five African-American Engagement Work Group churches across Cincinnati. Youth are empowered through information dissemination, education, and discussion. One young person stated, "We have the power to heal ourselves in conversation. Let's talk." This quote started a "Let's Talk" series, additional three series in that "Let's Talk" series for the urban community. An in-depth analysis of the 2024 Student Survey supported strategic efforts of Hamilton County ARC to identify high-priority schools and implement targeted prevention strategies. In 2025, the prevention goals are set to reestablish the Partner Prevention Group, increase Hamilton County Student Survey admissions to 12,000, strengthen engagement with schools, and reduce the access and availability of prescription drugs and opioids. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Lenora Godfrey, and I'm the President/CEO of the Hamilton County Mental Health and Recovery Services Board. And I sit on the Treatment Pillar with Josh Arnold, the President/CEO of Talbert House, with John Young for the African-American Engagement Work Group, as well as Danielle Jones. And John and Josh are here today. Danielle, unfortunately, could not be here with us, but she also sits on the African-American Engagement Work Group. And thank you for this opportunity just to tell you a little bit about what the Treatment Pillar has accomplished over 2024. The Treatment Pillar made significant strides in addressing substance use disorder through innovative programming and community engagement. The impact that was made, there were key success, was the African-American Engagement Work Group, AAEW, which expanded faith-based outreach and harm reduction efforts. Trimming the Stigma Campaign partnered with 40-plus barber shops and salons to educate communities on opioid addiction and treatment resources. Additionally, in 2023, there were six churches involved. They increased those churches from six to 12 churches in 2024. And they trained them as church champions in Narcan use and treatment navigation, leading the launch for the faith recovery community. So the AAEW was formed through the churches, but it has become a community-based outreach, fighting stigma of substance use disorder, as well as educating the African-American community on the treatment resources available in Hamilton County. Through events like Juneteenth and the Black Family Reunion, AAEW reached thousands with Narcan kits and recovery resources. It also expanded its digital outreach, updating its Facebook page, establishing a website, and Recovery Awareness Month campaigns. It also strengthened engagement, increasing treatment referrals for African-Americans and harm reduction efforts. Another impact is the Engagement Center played a pivotal role in supporting individuals in crisis, serving over 634 clients in 2024, of which 70% of those clients discharged and attended their first appointment at outpatient level of care. And 100% of the unsheltered that came to the center left sheltered upon discharge. To continue to enhance services and improve treatment outcomes, the center will introduce the ASAM 3.7 medically monitored inpatient care, integrating registered nurses and specialized withdrawal protocols. As you heard Josh during the press conference, the need to pivot and provide evidence-based care is definitely a focus of the Treatment Pillar. Other focuses, the Hamilton County Crisis Center, on opening in June, will enhance access to care with an expanded 24-bed Engagement Center, a new receiving center, and a short-term residential program. The facility will also provide open access to a pharmacy and primary care or physical health services for the community. The Hamilton County Mental Health Board continues to provide a comprehensive continuum of care, leveraging over 3.1 million in state opioid stimulant funding to support nine behavioral health agencies and 18 impactful projects. These initiatives include residential treatment, medication-assisted treatment, peer support, recovery housing and prevention services, particularly for individuals affected by the opioid and stimulant use. So forward-thinking, the Treatment Pillar is focused on expanding treatment access for justice-involved individuals, increasing community spaces for African-Americans to receive care, and developing a data-driven dashboard to improve service coordination. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Carstel Winston. I serve on the Interdiction Committee. I am also the EMS Chief with Cincinnati Fire. I serve alongside Trina Jackson of the One Stop Resource Center, along with Chief Tom Signin, Chief of Newtown. And we're part of the Interdiction Committee. And really, at the root of the Interdiction Committee, it has always been to track drug supply trends and then share them with our other members of the Coalition so that they can be better prepared for what's coming around the corner. But as the Interdiction Committee has moved on, really, there's more in terms of where we can help, where can we fill in the gaps, what resources can we provide? And really, we found that interdiction really is a connection through collaboration, and that is the best way that we can do things. So being collaborative, we've really done that in many different projects. One of the projects is the Price Hill Project, which really has seen a collaboration with the QRTs along with the Cincinnati Police Department. And this program has expanded from just being a Price Hill thing to a District III thing and to the other police districts, and really trying to see where the hotspots are in the area. And then there's the One Stop Resource Center. With the One Stop Resources, it is bringing all the resources into one place. And then with the addition of the 513 Relief Bus, in conjunction with that, it is really taking it to the person, having those resources. And so it can overcome so many different challenges that ones do have in getting those type of resources. And then with the Cincinnati Fire Department, one of the things we have done in terms of really providing data, and many of our members, when the epidemic really first started, was really intense, many of our members were overwhelmed by just the amount of runs and things like that and the stigma behind it. But at the same time, it has turned into a really beautiful thing in the fact that now we can take ones, instead of, we could forego the ER, but also take them to get help right there and then. And for those who are not transported, we can collaborate with the QRTs so they can do follow-through even on those who are not transported to the hospital. And then the Hamilton County Heroin Task Force. We know that they're more involved in the investigation of overdoses, but besides that, they've expanded their role in terms of education, giving seminars, and really seeing how they can help. So where are we at for 2025? Well, I think more than anything else is still providing that data, still filling in the gaps where needed, but also to continue in building connections through collaborations. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Greg Kesterman, and I am Health Commissioner for Hamilton County. And I am a co-chair in the Harm Reduction Subcommittee, joined by Tiffany Mattingly with the Health Collaborative. Together, the Harm Reduction Subcommittee has worked hard over the last year to continue to advance our work. What stands out the most for me personally is the incredible partnerships that this committee has created, which we believe are really saving lives in our community and having a true impact. Our team participated in more than 26 community events last year. At each event, we provided free first aid kits to Tara bags as well as Narcan. In fact, last year alone, we distributed over 24,000 doses of Narcan in our community, the life-saving opioid reversal medicine. We continue to expand our Safe Services Program or Syringe Services. Our team now operates at seven different locations, and last year, we had over 16,000 client visits. We implemented a drug checking program, allowing our clients to have their products tested so they know what they're using. It's offered at all of our Safe Services sites. And we continue to partner with Neighbor Hub Health to provide clinical services one day a week, ensuring that our clients have access to wound care as well as other healthcare services. We continue our work with stories over stigma, which is an education series which aims to dismantle misconceptions surrounding substance use disorder by fostering empathy and understanding among professionals. In 2024, we conducted 54 trainings with over 500 participants. We also continue to enhance our Test Before You Take program, which is designed to broaden access to fentanyl testing strips, targeting individuals at risk, particularly those that use substances recreationally. We have partnered with over 80 businesses and have provided 120,000 test strips last year alone. We're partnering with entertainment venues, barber shops, record stores, as well as bars, and installing easy-to-access kiosks throughout the community. And in summary, we're just continuing to do this work until we know that no one in Hamilton County loses their life due to the disease of addiction. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Cameron Foster. I'm the Community Outreach Coordinator at the Addiction Services Council. Our expansion of the Equity and Engagement Committee, we added Bishop Flag from Rose Chapel Church, and we added Don BJ and Dan Meyer, who is not able to be with us today. We hosted youth symposiums throughout the county. We had two, along with the Hamilton County Arc Partners, and some of the partners are the Venture First, Talbert House, Addiction Services Council, Crossroads. They were there to help provide their skills and their wares as well. We transitioned budgeting the Road to Recovery events, the ASC Overdose Awareness Event, and the first-ever African-American Overdose Awareness Event, which was held at Great New Hope Baptist Church. Our goal for this year is to work to engage other denominations in the faith sectors. We heard that there's 12 churches already, but we're looking to engage other churches, other denominations to become involved in the work and educate them as well on prevention and treatment in Hamilton County. We work to engage to the business sectors because they, as well, along with the faith community, need expansion as well to what's going on in Hamilton County. Thank you so much.
Good morning. My name is Cassidy Lee Can. I am the Vice President of Recovery Services at Greater Cincinnati Behavioral Health, and I am co-chair of the Recovery Pillar with Tyler and Louise. And we are a new pillar, so we started in 2024. And recovery really expands across the Steering Committee and all the pillars. And so what we wanted to focus on is two major things, but looking at barriers associated with recovery. So we know that treatment works. We know that recovery is possible, but we were tasked at looking at when somebody gets into early recovery and maintains long-term recovery, how can we assist by breaking down barriers, reducing stigma, and providing resources for those? We also found it to be very important that we have the voice of lived experience on the committee. And so through Louise and his partnership with On the Front Lines, we have an individual that can really speak at the level of lived experience to make sure that we continue to address barriers in recovery. And so I want to highlight two main programs that we have within our Recovery Pillar. And the first is the Recovery Friendly Hamilton County, which is led by Tyler Meenick. In 2024, Governor Mike DeWine launched the Ohio Recovery Friendly Workplace, which was inspired by the success of our Recovery Friendly Hamilton County. By the end of 2024, Recovery Friendly Hamilton County reached 67 designees, which represented over 17,000 employees and their employers who committed to designating themselves as a Recovery Friendly Workplace. And through the annual survey given to employers and employees, 66% observed an increase in employee morale since being designated, and 65% noticed a decline in stigma surrounding addiction and recovery. The second group I want to highlight is On the Front Lines Community Alliance. This is a nonprofit, peer-run recovery community organization led by Hannah Schilling. On the Front Lines has created a team approach of recovery professionals to support one another and in turn, better serve the people they work with. This is a group of individuals providing substance use disorder services and also those with lived experience operating in a peer role that work as a part of this alliance. And so in 2024, On the Front Lines secured its first funding as a nonprofit. It hosted their first community catalyst conference, as well as multiple workshops for the community, which has helped strengthen its role in peer-led vocational support. Throughout the year, they host monthly meetings, and over the course of 2024, over 630 individuals attended these meetings, which represented 151 social service agencies. And through this monthly meeting and the connection and collaboration that happens, just under 2,000 connections were made. So that's individuals that through this community alliance were able to identify resources for the people that they were working with and providing immediate referral services to substance use disorder and mental health services. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That was just a brief overview of what has been a very busy 2024, but happy to answer any questions and field time to some of the other Steering Committee members that are here today as well.
Thank you. Thank you all, once again, for being here and, more importantly, doing the work. Megan, you and Abby both highlighted the collective nature of the work, the community approach to the work. And I just, you know, as the individuals came up from the different pillars, you know, people are showing up. The people that have issues related to substance use disorder are showing up in different ways in this community. And so it strikes me, as Nicole talked about the work they're doing, we're showing up in schools. Lenora talked about the Engagement Center and community events, they're showing up there. Carstel talked about law enforcement's involvement here and critical participation, and folks are showing up at the scene of an overdose, but also at the one-stop. Greg talked about public health, and they're showing up at the Syringe Exchange, and they're showing up in the hospitals. Cameron talked about the work, especially in the African-American community, people showing up in churches and barber shops and beauty shops. Cassidy talked about the long-term recovery, people are showing up there in the workplace and in support groups, the peer support groups. So we're touching these individuals as they're showing up to the individual pillars in the work that you are doing in the community. And I think it's really important that, it strikes me that it's so comprehensive. And so when people are ready to show up, we're ready to embrace those individuals and offer practical solutions and offer hope to those individuals. And that's what the work's about, right? And so I think we've been really strategic. In this collaboration, it's allowed us to be strategic when we think about what those solutions look like, because without each of us sitting together at the same time at the same table and the decision-makers being there, we don't have those kinds of responses. We just don't have the ability to offer the kind of hope that we've offered over the last 10 years. And so I just think it's a real credit to the group, and I am very proud to be a part of it. So I really don't have any questions. But I do want to say thank you, and especially you to Megan and Abby for continuing to organize this effort and keep us on track. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Somer Udumis.
Thank you so much, and thank all of you for your presentations. Treating addiction is a necessary component of Hamilton County. We have to do it. You've, all of you have directly saved lives and indirectly, indirectly, reducing stigma, which was brought up several times. President Drehouse, I'd like to thank you for your vision. And as you were saying, without vision, the people perish. And I contend that without hope, people perish. And all of you are providing the hope that people need. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Commissioner Reese.
Yeah, thank you very much. At the press conference earlier this morning, one of the things I said, but I'm going to say it now, because one thing about the media, they only have a couple minutes, but I want all of the residents of Hamilton County who watch us to hear what I said. This is not the norm. What has been put together with breaking down the silos, getting to the people where they are down at the street level, when you get to the barber shops and the beauty shops and you're at the places where people eat, you're going to them instead of waiting in a room saying, "Did you come see us?" And then putting the group on the 513 Relief Bus, which is another groundbreaking thing that we have here in Hamilton County that other people don't have. We are on wheels. We are the DoorDash without the funding for it, right? Free DoorDash. We're taking the resources. And the Quick Response Team is not just the name, it's really Quick Response. And then I want to credit the Coalition, but I also want to credit our board because we have to vote on these funds. And one of the things that we said during the ARPA dollars was that you could call during certain hours, but these situations don't happen between nine and five only. And now we're 24 hours, and if it happens at nighttime, we're right there to help you. The mental health component, all of these things, they just are not normal. This is groundbreaking. This is Hamilton County in a leadership way. I want to, as I said earlier, thank Commissioner President Drehouse, who took the mantle from former Commissioner Hartman, as she indicated, but kept this thing going. This was not my thing. This, we're in it all the way because these things change. And what I love about the group, Megan and your leadership as well, what I love about the group is that if, you know, we could come over here and solve this problem with this drug, but the dealer got something else on the market, and you're able to change with the times and quickly change so we don't become outdated. So I just wanted to say, and when we look at the, of course, our goal is no deaths. One death is too many. But when you look at 2017, we're way up, 500 and something, and now we're down to 200 and something, it shows that all of the new tools that have been put in place as we continue to evolve has been working. And so we want to continue to work, but also we're building relationships. You're out there building relations in the pool pit or the barber shop, or if it's at the office, we're there to help people where they are. So I just, I'm very excited, but I just want So, I just, I'm very excited, but I just want people in Hamilton County to know, you don't have this all over. Now, you know, we are consulting and helping people replicate, but Hamilton County, what you guys put together is unbelievable. And I want to thank you because you have saved so many lives, so many more to go, but you've saved so many lives. And I just didn't want us to take it lightly as just another presentation. So, thank you very much, really appreciate it, and looking forward to us continuing to evolve so we can continue to have the numbers go down. Thank you.
So, I mean, I have to ask one question. We can't have everyone here and not ask a question. So, I think it might be interesting, we've talked about the history, we've talked about the 10 years, we've talked about the annual report and the work that's gone on. We recently had an alert, though, related to drug activity in this community and an increase in overdose deaths. We saw a bit of a spike a couple weeks ago. And so, I don't know if it's Chief Signin or if it's Commissioner Kesterman, but these alerts are serious business, and we have to hit certain metrics in order to issue those alerts. And so, we, when we do an alert as a group, we've given it some serious thought, but it is meant to bring to the attention of people in this community something that's dangerous, something that's happening particularly in the drug supply or the way people are using drugs, and it's meant to save lives. And so, Chief Signin is at the podium, so I assume you and Greg.
Everyone kept pointing at me, so I'm here.
Right. Greg just sits with his legs crossed, so he's not.
Exactly.
But.
He's the smart one, he doesn't say.
There we go. Well, you did jump to the microphone, so I'm just.
Yeah.
So, but anyway, I just think, because we are in a moment in time, and I want people to understand what it means to have an alert go out and why this particular alert went out a few weeks ago.
Yeah, I want to say that one of the cool things with this group is we learn our lessons. And carfentanil in 2016 really was, Cincinnati Hamilton County was the first place in the United States to see, and we learned a lot of lessons. And that lesson was the drug supply impacts those using it and impacts our community. And to give you a little background how this works, is there's a group of people who are following these drug trends, and it has expanded to non-traditional roles. It's usually just law enforcement, but we have public health, we have the Office of Addiction Response Coalition, we have the Task Force. Commissioner Drehouse, there's a group of people, when we start following trends, and when we follow trends, I'm not just talking about on the street, I'm talking about international supply. When we start seeing something coming across internationally, when I hear the word of it being mentioned in the United States, and then next thing you know, the health department's drug checking on the north side has that same component, you start connecting all the dots, and that's what really puts us ahead of the game, is following those trends all the way from international to local supply. So, because of that, we're able to follow these trends, and when we start seeing something pop up, we start having discussions. And we're monitoring, we've gotten to a point now, we talk about this as a group, Megan and I and Abby and Mike talk about this a lot, is we've gotten to the point where we can pretty confidently, not 100%, determine if it's user behavior or if it's actually the drug supply change. And to your point, Commissioner Drehouse, that's what happened on this last one. It was an indicator that there was a change in drug supply itself. And we saw, I think it was 12 overdose deaths within 72-hour period. It was 12 overdose deaths in 72-hour period, and it was a mixture of chronic users and non-chronic users. And if I'm not mistaken, four were homeless. So, what we saw is we started having conversations internally, this is what we're seeing, this is who it's impacting. We give a recommendation, and we basically tell Commissioner Drehouse and the group, we think this is drug supply, we should put out an alert. That alert goes out not just to the resources, but to the public itself. And I got to tell you, the first responders have changed. It was really heartfelt when we were in District III meeting, and District One Officer was there, and he said, "One of those homeless people was a friend of mine." I'm going to go back and tell them what they're seeing. We share this intelligence with Cincinnati Police and all of our partners. They were not aware of what metamoline was, this tranquilizer, this transition from xylazine to metamoline. They literally went to the homeless population and told them about this. And that's really where we start seeing, when we put the alerts out, we right off the bat see this reduction in overdoses and overdose deaths, so we know it's working. It's having that indication of supply and working as a group, and it's all the different partners from different perspectives. And just so you know, we're actually formalizing a group, Public Health Part of Addiction Response Coalition, the Task Force, FBI, Ohio ONIC, which is Ohio Narcotics Information Center, the Coroner's Office are now sitting together, and we will formalize a drug supply chain from international to local, and we will be able to give you and others a recommendation on what we're seeing on supply and how to overcome that. So, it really is a group effort, there's a lot of discussion. We don't always agree, but the thing we do agree on is that getting the information is more important than us holding it, and that's really significant, that's what's changed a lot. So, that's kind of a basis of what we do, and that alert was a drug supply. We have seen a reduction after that, but I drive making crazy because I'm a worrier, so I'm always worrying about the next supply, and I've already got an honor about what's coming next, so we're planning for the next wave, and we'll be prepared for it.
And I want to just elaborate, you don't always agree, but it's always about doing what we can to save lives and not sending a false alarm, not getting people used to these alerts in a way that takes away the power of the alert. So, it's about the timing, it's about what we're seeing, but it's always about doing what we think is best for those in this community who are either suffering from substance use disorder or a family member or a friend of someone that is struggling with addiction, and giving them the tools they need to use safely or to respond to an emergency when they see it. So, that's the tug and pull, and it's hard. It's hard to know when is enough or when is too much. But those are the discussions that are happening, but it's always about trying to do right by the community.
That's what's super cool about the quiet people is because when they speak, you know it's important.
When I get an email from Greg Kesterman.
Yeah, so, when Greg speaks, you know that he's saying it from a point of a perspective that is very important, and we do listen to it. And he is very big on making sure we don't overuse these warnings, which is important, and that's the challenge, is finding the balance. So, you're 100% right, and this group is really cool to have. We did not have this 10 years ago. We got caught off guard with carfentanil. And for me personally, it's one of the things when I'm talking to groups and to all of us, it's important we understand this so that we are never caught off again. Cincinnati, Hamilton County was caught off guard and was internationally known as this place of overdoses, nearly 200 in a week, up to 40 in a day. And I can tell you this, we may initially not know a drug coming, but the infrastructure, the group of people we have, and we have the collaborations where we actually have a key to each other's silos, front and back door, and we work with each other. I don't think Cincinnati Hamilton County would be caught off guard like that again.
Let me just say one other thing, because it's gone unsaid, that we have the settlement dollars that are coming in through the One Ohio Foundation and the local dollars that are coming to us, and we've gotten two rounds out into the community to continue to do this work, you know, resources provided by the distributors. And so, this group also is informing those decisions. And so, this group is powerful on so many different levels, but that information that you bring to the table to help us decide on how to best use those dollars has been critically important to our work as well. And that is, when I say the work, I mean the work of the county commissioners, because we are not, I'm going to speak for myself, but probably both or all, we are not experts in this field, you are. And so, we are happy to get those recommendations and then respond in kind. Commissioner Somer Udumis, did you have another comment?
I just had a last comment, always do. But I just want to leave this with you guys. Sometimes when you're in the midst of an issue or a problem, you don't realize the greatness of your work. And I was looking at all of you when everybody else was talking, and everyone is just sitting there so humbly, and I feel that you are humble. You know that you're doing great work. And so, all of you are God-sent. I just want to say that, and I can feel it, and I can feel your passion, and I know it takes hard work, so I just thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you once again all for being here. That concludes our agenda. So, with that, I'm going to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Somer Udumis?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes. Thank you.